In the in-building study could be done and the state actually has money to go towards doing that versus us having to do it, so.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner.
Good.
I always have a question.
Yes, sir.
About when we start getting change orders was was these change orders something caused by the lack of proper engineering on the front end?
So, in my opinion, yes, I brought that up to Motorola, um, like the tower studies, I feel like that should have been identified in the pre-sale.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, if we're telling, if you're telling me that the towers are now overloaded.
Yeah.
That tells me that they didn't do the proper engineering up front because you over-engineer the towers that are gonna hold the equipment in the air.
Yep.
And when you tell me that it's overloaded now, I'll tell you that that you didn't do the proper engineering and you're costing me money. And I wanna know why the heck that's the case.
Yeah, and so we've been fighting this for probably a month and a half, two months, I I've been battling them on this, so. The initial assessment is gonna be by a secondary engineer, basically to give us a second opinion. And then look at placement of the microwaves and things like that to see, cuz.
I'd like to see them come to us and explain to us where their failures in proper engineering was on the front side.
They didn't do, they didn't do this in-depth study, that's, that's what the problem is, they, the in-depth study where they look at it and they actually rate everything. Is all they did is they looked and said, this tower hits this tower, this tower, you know, it all worked, they didn't actually come in and.
Somebody had the engineer to hold the tower to hold the equipment in the air.
That was, that was back in two thousand and seven.
Yeah, so they're saying we're already overweight, the equipment that's sitting there and been on those towers for fifteen years is overweight, so it's not part of the current project. And part of the current project, we will be taking down that weight that's up there and putting up new stuff, but they won't even climb the towers to do that until they're within that weight rating. But the failure, one hundred percent, we agree that there is a failure in the design, but it happened in two thousand and eight. And we can't even find all the the records for that, even when we've contacted the company that build them. It's been so long that they don't have the records to show us that, cuz we thought the same thing, how are, the towers were built for this system, how is the system overweight? But it was two thousand and eight, so now I'm trying to go back and find that and find the the correct people to to talk to about that.
And that's what we're, so we're trying to correct the error that was made in the past and we actually want it reinforced beyond what we need, so in the future. Whether we have to do it or somebody else, they don't have to come back and say, hey, we gotta reinforce these again, so.
Well, that's what I'm gonna say, I I don't want us to become obsolete now.
Yeah.
It's it's ridiculous that we're having to pay to put new structures in the air because two thousand and eight wasn't that long ago.
Yeah, well, and it's, so it's all it'll be is they'll adjust some of the steel, um, make the concrete base a little bit bigger. Or add additional guide wires, so the actual tower is structurally sound, it just needs to be reinforced to hold more weight. And like I, we told them, we want those two, cuz twelve miles our main tower, so that thing should have been our strongest tower, in my opinion. And then Loving would blow your mind, cuz I think there's two dishes and three antennas on it, that's all that's on it. But they use such a, I mean, the concrete pad is literally as big around as the tower is, so. It shouldn't take too much, I'm hoping.
The problem is sections, like I know part of what they told us is on one tower, there's a twenty-foot section and the four hundred feet height. That needs to be reinforced because of what hangs on the tower right in that area. So, it's it's not the entire tower, it's gonna be sections that have to be reinforced for what hangs off the tower.
But yeah, we are gonna, we're gonna, we're trying to work with them to get it figured out, so, but yes, in my opinion, it was a oversight in the pre-sale, something that should have been identified upfront by the engineer, cuz they did do drawings and sketches of the towers, things like that, I guess they just didn't do the full-on study. And I would assume because that cost money and we weren't paying in the pre-sale, there was no guarantee that we were gonna buy, so.
Well, let's just don't get ourselves in the same situation that we're looking at ten years down the road, twenty years down the road, that because we didn't, we didn't do the proper engineering.
And that's kind of what we told them, is we don't wanna be at that one hundred and ten percent, we wanna be at like eighty-five or ninety, so there's room for future growth.
Yeah.
So.
Any further questions? Do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve radio system upgrade change orders.
Second.
We have a motion and second, call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlsson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Josh. Next, we have set time and date for Eddy County Special Commission meeting, Rhonda, any more commissioners?
Okay. We received our twenty twenty-three tax rates Saturday, and by statute, they must be approved, uh, within five days of receiving them. And so I'm here to c- uh, ask for a special call business meeting for you guys to be able to approve those tax rates. And so we're with a holiday in the middle and everything, it's kinda cutting us close, so I think Roberta and I discussed maybe having it on Thursday, um, at eight thirty in the morning, if that works for for you guys.
Okay.
Cuz Thursday would be our deadline and tomorrow's cutting it too close, and like Rhonda said, because of timing with the holiday and we got them Saturday, it's kinda where it fell this year.
Commissioner Henry, how does that work for your schedule?
I mean, I have a meeting that morning, but I can skip it if, all it needs is three, right?
Yes.
So if y'all can't make it, I can skip mine.
I will be here.
You're not gonna be here?
Hmm, but there's three of us, but I can do it.
Okay, I'll be here.
I'll figure out how to rearrange.
And we could, we could put it at a different time instead of.
Well, but maybe Sarah, can you check with her?
Yeah, I'm checking with her, we can do it at another time.
Or yeah, I mean, if we could just do it.
Later on.
Eleven thirty.
Yeah, now after lunch, I'll I'll be here after lunch on Thursday.
What if you put it like eleven thirty?
Eleven thirty would be perfect.
If we could do like eleven thirty, then I could do mine and get here at a different time, I think.
Okay.
Unless Sarah can be here then I'm near eleven.
Okay, um, yes, she hasn't.
Yeah, so check with Sarah, if she can do it at eight thirty in the morning, that's better for me, but if she can't. And if she can't be here, then we'll we'll work at eleven thirty.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to approve it at eight thirty, contingent upon Commissioner Cordova, and we may change it to eleven thirty.
Okay, can I have that motion?
It's not moved.
Can you have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second, call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlsson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have Sandpoint landfill water line replacement budget adjustment, Jason.
Already, huh?
Yeah. But he's been patient back there, bad.
Now, this ain't even a bad one. So, we're coming to you this morning, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, um, with a couple of these deals. We, um, we've recently engaged engineers, um, for the cell six, which is the next item on your budget. As part of our current plan out of the landfill, with us being in cell five and, um, getting ready to expand, what we've identified is that we still have a significant amount of space on the top of the landfill, on the current cells one through four. You recently approved the budget for some wind screens that we've procured that are out there, so we're moving our operations back to the top of the landfill. With that, we're going to, with your approval, try to proceed with cell six. The intention with this being a step compaction approach to where almost with as you do dirt compaction, you do it in steps and lifts. It's hard to do that right now with the area that they have in cell five, so with us doing cell six, it expands our surface area to allow that process to go all the way across self-six and five and back, which is why we're asking for cell six, which brings us to the water line. With that, one of the major problems they had with the construction of cell six, and one of our major issues we face every day, is not being able to get enough water for compaction. The current line they have right now is a, uh, three-inch, it's, it ties in, they drain the tanks that they have every day. And they kinda just wait for them to get full enough and they run them again, that was a major issue with the construction of cell five. So with this, this would increase the water line to an eight-inch, and we'd also look at putting another tank. So this would be able to keep up with the demand that we have out there for the water and the compaction operations that we're gonna have, be ongoing with for the next several years. So we've coordinated this with the city, they're amenable to letting us tie into the water line at the highway with this size line. So this is a joint effort that we have discussed with them and that they're on board with, so. Stand for questions?
Questions? Questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve Sandpoint landfill water line replacement budget adjustment.
Have a second, motion and second, call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlsson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Next, we have budget adjustment for Sandpoint landfill cell six construction.
Thank you, Commissioner, so kinda as we just discussed, this is the ongoing effort to expand and and improve our compaction. We're moving back up the cells one through four here probably within the next month. What we're hoping is that in the effort of efficiency, as we excavate cell six, we can cover the tops of one through four with the activation of six. And then, like I said, once that's excavated, lined, constructed, then we can go into cell six, bring that up even with five, and then we have that entire area to go across with that step compaction method that I was talking about. We did have an engineer design this, that's what we came to with you last year for the approval, we've had it designed, and then we've got a really good estimate right now that we're gonna take out to bid if this is approved, so, um, we didn't.
So we're gonna put it out to bid?
Yes, sir. The intention was not to bring this to you with an estimate that was too low or too high, we wanted to get an engineered estimate that was pretty accurate, so that's why this is coming to you today.
Questions? Questions? As we grow, we're gonna have to have bigger, bigger deals, unfortunately, but, so can I have a motion to approve?
The motion to approve budget adjustment for Sandpoint, and it will sell six construction.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second, call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlsson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Thank you, one more budget adjustment, North Thirteenth Road Maintenance Project Budget Adjustment Request.
One more today. Thank you, Commissioner. This is a request, we've had a plan for North Thirteenth, this is part of an NMDOT LGRF grant that we get every year, um, that we identified that needed the attention. What we're asking for is the remainder of the project fund, we've had an engineer look at this and give us a really good estimate, simple set of plans with an alignment and a road section that goes all the way from Ritchie within the city of Artesia to the highway at two eighty-five. Um, this is a partnership project with the city of Artesia that they are amenable to and are partnering with us on. Essentially, what we're doing is the same thing we did to North Twenty-Six a few years ago. So this will be a two-inch pavement with a tom on top of it, that we are, um, taking out, this road really needs the attention. You know, we did, we did Twenty-Six and it came out really good, so now we're moving down to the south, and we've done all the other, uh, sections of North Thirteenth, this is kind of the final one to get it tied through into the middle of Artesia.
Okay, questions?
No, I, but you're, I mean, Twenty-Six, when y'all did that, made a huge impact, Thirteenth is a heavily, heavily traveled road, right there in front of Fletzy and everything else, so. It it's needed, glad to see it moving, so.
Questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
There's no reason for me, do I need to?
I'd abstain.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
I'll make the motion to approve North Thirteenth Road Maintenance Project.
Have a motion and second, call for the vote.
Henry?
Abstain.
Carlsson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Next, we have CertO Committee Member Confirmation. Commissioners, this is coming to you as an agenda request, it is also on the consent resolution as well for the boards and committees, however, we're bringing it to you as an agenda request because there was a change in how that was represented. Uh, prior, we had the appointment type as po- policy committee representative and technical committee representative. Um, along with, uh, the appointed designees, it was the community services director, uh, with the planning and development manager, and then the public works director, so. We're changing that direction, and so that's why it's coming to you as an agenda request first before it's on the consent agenda approval. Jason?
Questions?
Just said it all.
Have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion for CertO Committee Member Confirmation.
Second.
Have a motion and second, call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlsson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Next, we have our resolution and agreement consent agenda.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve resolution agreement consent agenda as presented.
Second that motion.
Have a motion and second, call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlsson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is our travel request consent agenda.
Any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve travel consent agenda.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second, call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlsson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
We do not have any emergency business, legislative comments, announcements, and updates. I just wanted to bring to your attention really quickly, NMC, um, and I'm sure, I don't know if Mark will speak more of it, but just really briefly, NMC, um, brought their twenty twenty-four legislative priorities, um, they sent them out to county managers here recently. I'm not gonna go over all of them, there's, there's quite a few of them, but just in general, um, they are really focusing on detention this year. There's, um, three under House Bill two that they're focusing on for detention reimbursement fund, recruitment and retention for detention, and prisoner transport and extradition, they're also focusing on fire and rescue EMS, um, with a couple of legislative priorities for that as well, um, too. And then they will be taking the state health benefits, um, plan to legislative for hopefully, um, a resolution, if you remember, where the general services department billed each of us counties in the pool, um, and we had, um, formally went into litigation with them. They're hopeful, hopefully going to have a resolution coming out of legislative session for that as well, too, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Elected official department comments, announcements, and updates?
Couple quick things this morning, um. We are looking at, we've identified an opportunity with the Department of Finance, DFA. They have a twenty twenty-three recreational and quality of life grant opportunity coming up, they have forty million dollars in this account that they're giving up between the entities, um. We've, we've identified a project, the only issue with this is it's a quick turnaround, it's due on September thirteenth, and we have to have the project, um, expanded and complete by June of next year. So, what we are gonna go after is a bathroom for the Artesia Shooting Range. We've already kind of lifted a floor plan, we've gone out there and looked at it a little bit, and with everything he's doing and bringing to the county, that'd be a good one to start and kind of look at. So we will be preparing that and putting it in to go out there and do some improvements, and he, you know, talking with Jerry, and we can bring him in, I know he's wanted to come speak to you a few times. He's bringing several events, state shoots, and, um, several people to the county with that shooting range out there, and he's doing a really good job, so. What he's asking for is a bathroom that can handle that type of, uh, those events, so something that's not porta-johns and, um, porta-potties, so. We're gonna look and see if we can help that, we've got a floor plan and a pretty good estimate, we're gonna submit for that here coming up in the next week, I wanna let you know that. The other thing I do wanna put on your radar, so you can know when you start getting phone calls, is we are about to do Orchard Lane from, uh, North Canal all the way out to the highway, so that one's coming here within the next week. We've got a proposal and a solution, and we're gonna try to get that one going, so they're gonna have PSAs going out this week. And we're gonna set message boards, but even then, you know how much travel that'd use with residential, um, traffic? We are communicating with the school buses, so we'll try to do our best to get in and out of there as quick as we can, but we are gonna have some, um, moving parts here within the next couple of weeks, so.
Or we're gonna make that a little wider.
As much as we can, within the definition of maintenance, so. We're gonna take it back to what it originally was.
Not supposed to ask those questions. That railroad crossing?
We're gonna go, we have a meeting with the railroad, we're gonna talk to them, we're gonna try to do whatever we can to get those fixed. So, our, our friends at the railroad are gonna hopefully cooperate with this. Yeah, well, so we're, we are working with the railroad to try to get those fixed and improved, too, so. Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, so, one thing to bring up is the, uh, US Army Corps of Engineers sent out a letter to us this, uh, last week, we got it August twenty-third. So they're looking at evaluating a former Carlsbad Precision bombing range, it's off two eighty-five, kinda northwest of Brantley Lake. So they're gonna be sending letters out, and it's basically their, those money approved by Congress to help rehab those areas, is from what I read. So each individual landowner will be getting that in the mail, so if you guys get a call or anything, um, I know there's suppliers right there, we have some at our office, so we'll make them available. And then, back to the radio system, we were actually asked if we would be a backup core, so the M core, it was something we purchased originally for our own system. We returned it because we joined the state, they're gonna need to do a north and south zone, their primary core will be in Las Cruces, cuz that's where the state police dispatch is, but they're wanting to put the backup to that here in Eddy County. So I thought that was a pretty neat deal for us to be asked to, out of everybody in the south to be the backup, so. We are trying to identify a location for that, speak with Roberta, uh, Mike Roybacher's gonna come down and meet with us, so. And then the only other thing I had is we had a structured fire in Artesia two weeks ago, uh, started in a hot water heater closet in the garage. Newer construction home, um, our engine was there within two and a half minutes, and was able to contain the fire to that closet, so. There was a brand-new car sitting in the garage, and like I said, I think the house is six years old, so very minimal damage, there was some, you know, from checking for extension and then, um, water damage, but that was it, it was minimal, so, it was a good job by the crew, so. Um, any questions or anything that come up, don't hesitate to call us, we appreciate your support, and have a good day.
Thank you, Josh.
Thanks, Josh.
Good morning.
Morning, Chair.
Just wanted to bring you up to speed on a few things, um, our traffic team has progressed, I mean, we, we've like evolved into something that I really never anticipated, we, uh, everyone on our team, which we have five now, are, uh, and that's because of our manning levels are up. They're all, uh, crash reconstructionists, um, we're not using state police a whole lot anymore. And, which is, uh, and which is nothing against them, they're, they're short-staffed, and they're spread thin, and that allows them to go and focus on other areas that they can focus on, so. We're handling all that, and I would encourage y'all when you, and, and I, I know that Commissioner Carlson has approached me several times, um, as have, have others, but, um, if you have hotspots and issues with constituents where they have problem areas, that's what we kinda do, is we go from, we're, we're, we're troubleshooters, we go from place to place. And of course, it's like whack-a-mole, I mean, but, I mean, we, we knock them down, and then, I mean, we, we have to go like, like, uh, uh, what's them called, road, what, out in, in, in Malaga, um. Duarte, Duarte Road is just a, a constant one that we end up having to circle back to, uh, every time, but, uh, North Canal becomes a problem sometimes, it, it just, we, we chase the problem around. But that's what, that's what they're designed to do, so we don't mind that a bit, um, and it's working out very well, I'm really happy with it. As, as Roberta alluded to with, uh, NMC, our legislative priorities have come out, um, a lot of focus, as she said, on detention centers. It's a nightmare, uh, across the state, and thank God we have, uh, Billy Massengill here, because other people like right next door in Chavas County, they just, they lost their, their jail administrator, and I, I don't know what, they're, they're struggling, and it, it's, it's a rough time for them, so we're blessed here as far as how ours is going, but the liability is through the roof. There's gonna be a point where we're, we're gonna end up being uninsurable in New Mexico, because of the, the liberal laws that we have here that allow anybody to sue for anything. One of the other things that we're kind of focusing on is IPR, we're feeling the brunt of IPR here, I mean, we've hired three full-time employees just to try and handle it, it almost crushed Cass's office, um, with the burden of it, and I, I don't. We're, we're trying to get some changes made, but at, where we're at right now is, these three full-time, and I can't speak, uh, but I, I have no doubt that, that Roberta's, it is the same way, our two girls are just non-stop, I mean, they work constantly, you don't even see them. Because they're holed up, having to handle all this stuff, and it's just, it's ridiculous, it's, it's become a, it, it's been weaponized, is what it is. And folks are using it for just digging around, cuz they want this, they want that, and it really serves no legitimate purpose, in my opinion, but that's where we're at. NMC is working on that, we're, we're gonna try, it started with the clerks, and that's given us a little toehold in there to get some, some changes made. And we're gonna continue to try and get them changed, but I don't know how, how, uh, effective it's gonna be. Our dogs, our canines, uh, we're moving along with that, the, uh, our folks, we're sending our handlers and the supervisors, the supervisor only going for part of it, but to a training, they're gonna, they're already exp- well, one of them, uh, Captain Lynn is already experienced like, like I am from the Navy with, uh, handling, you know, supervising working dogs, we were never handler, but we supervised. And, uh, but we're gonna get, get them trained up, uh, this is some of the best training I've ever seen, the dogs are amazing, uh, they're very young, so they're gonna have a long lifespan, or working lifespan. And I think it's gonna be a really, really exciting thing for the county. We've never really had a successful dog program in the past, and now we're gonna have one, guaranteed, it's gonna be top-notch. The other thing we're moving on to is, uh, since we, we had some, a weird dynamic with the, the Carlsbad school system, we had an SRO in there, and at one time, there were two. It's, there, we, we never did end up with an MOU, i- it was all kinds of weird things happened, so we, they chose to, to, uh, work with, with, uh, Carlsbad Police Department exclusively, which is fine, because that allowed us to look at some other options, and we were approached immediately by Jefferson Montessori and the Prep Academy, and asked to have a presence with them, so that's where we're moving forward, that's where we're focusing, uh, some resources, and, uh, we're also opening our Operation Hard Target. It's kinda like, that's our umbrella, and we have some really, uh, we, we, we put some money aside for that, we have some really cool stickers that people can put on there saying, you know, we're, we're protected by Operation Hard Target. And I, I have a lot of, uh, high hopes that it's gonna be a really good thing for us, and it's gonna be, it's, I think it's a really good look for the county, it gives us a little bit of, uh, you know, we, we're, we're out there in the schools, it, we, we're not a huge. Uh, we, we're not a huge presence, but we're there. And I think that's what we need, is just to have that, again, a toe hold in there where we can say, hey, we're, we're out here doing this for you. So I, I, I'm pretty proud of that, I'm proud of the folks that, uh, that worked hard to make that happen. But we've got a lot of cool things going on, um, I wanna thank Jason for the, the massive amounts of extra traffic in front of my office, since he changed it. No, it, it's understood and, and once the, the stoplight goes in out there, it's gonna make it a lot safer for my folks, cause. Getting across national parks to respond out somewhere from the office is just a nightmare for the, the, these guys and gals. So it's really nice, it takes me now, I think, uh, anywhere from thirteen to fifteen minutes from my house to the office. Where it used to take me up to thirty, so. I see a lot of people using it, it's really nice, so I, I just wanted to compliment Jason on that, 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 that really is a big deal. So, and that's my, a- any, any questions for me? Yes, sir.
One question, go ahead. I, I, well, and I'm glad you mentioned IPR, cause I wrote it down. I was really surprised, I've been in a couple different discussions with some representatives that really had no idea how bad IPR has become. Um, how do we, and, and the first question one of them asked was, well, does NMC, are they doing something? And I said, well, I'm sure they are, I know we've talked about it quite a bit, so I'm glad to hear that. What do we need to do to help educate some of these other representatives? Cause I, I do understand, um, most of, a, a lot of our representatives are attorneys. And so, you know, they like IPR because they understand how to manipulate it possibly or, or whatever. Um, and it is unfortunate because IPR to me lately, it's felt like it's just a system to set up to fail. Because either we're gonna inundate you with so much stuff, you accidentally miss something, or we don't get enough, or no matter what. Whatever side we're trying to caution on, it feels like we're set to failure on that. And so, I, I think a lot of our, but, a lot of those representatives represent even, even the liberal counties are feeling the same pain. How do we help them really think through this and, and make, IPR's a, a great system if it was used properly, I got no issue with being transparent, none of us do. Um, but when we're being IPR from California, because they wanna put it on YouTube, that doesn't feel like what it was designed to do. Um, that feels like there, there's a lot more to it.
Well, and it, it's hampering investigations too. Because we're required to release information immediately, like video footage, all this, so. Our people have to jump through their butts to, to get it redacted properly and not, and, and I mean, and, and they're, they're having to play catch-up and say. Well, what do we need to, uh, keep here to, to protect the investigation? Because that's no longer a, a, that's no longer a, an excuse for us to, to hold back anything. They're like, oh, no, no, that doesn't matter, if, if it, uh, hampers the investigation too bad, the public needs to know, and we're like, well, okay. I honestly think and it's something I'm gonna talk to, uh. At the next meeting, I'm gonna bring up, and I'm gonna bring it up with, uh, Joy, Ms. Parson, is I think we need something kinda like the Arrowhead study that we did. Where we have something laid out very concisely from NMC about this is, this is what's happening. This is what it's costing counties, cause granted, we're very fortunate here in Eddy County, we have resources, we're able to hire these three people. There's other counties out there that can't afford that, there's cities, there's municipalities, they can't afford to go and hire these people. So they're having to, to take away services from citizens, because they have to pull someone away from doing their job. To do this daunting task and, and Cass can, I mean, it, it was a nightmare for him. And it's no fun now for us, but I mean, it, it's our burden, it's, it's not our, you know, it's not for him to handle. So I think that's what needs to happen, that's what, that's what we have talked about, I'm gonna talk to Joy more about it. And try and push some resources in that direction. Because again, you're absolutely right, transparency is, i- i- is fine and, and that's, we, we want that in our, in our government. But it, it's been weaponized, this has been weaponized, there, it's people looking for a quick buck. Um, they're looking for, uh, some kinda social media splash. And that's, that's not the purpose of it, that's not what we're here to do.
Well, I'd like to tack on two things, the money side, that's costing the counties and cities, but also. The folks that are being, becoming unintended victims of, of the IPR. I mean, we've, uh, we've seen case after case where someone's using IPR to get information on someone whom then that person becomes a victim. A- and there was no reason for that, so. I, I think there's, there's quite a bit, I, I think that's a great idea, however we can do, I don't know how we can make that case for the victims. I, I, I don't understand how we could do it, but if we could put a study together, I, I think that would help.
And maybe a suggestion to Joy would be, because, um, a lot of the county managers are very responsive, um, when she, she sends information out, you know, to get survey information.
Yeah.
I had reached out personally to other county managers and I unfortunately didn't get a whole lot of response, but the ones I did, I got from Santa Fe County, Bernalillo County. Who's been a huge help, uh, San Juan County, and unfortunately, we're more in the ballpark with those bigger counties of the IPR requests that we get. Compared to some of the smaller counties, but I think maybe getting a survey out, uh, to all the county managers, I think we can get a lot of information.
Yeah, and, and Joy's been leaning on the county managers quite a bit for this kinda thing and I, I think that's a, an excellent avenue to pursue. Um, yeah, we brought Santa Fe County, Adon Mendoza, the, the sheriff there is a good friend of mine and. He, he's just get, it, and, and you, you talk about liberal counties, it, it's affecting lib- it, this is a nonpartisan issue. And Adon is getting overrun, he has three full-time employees now and he goes, I'm fixing to probably have to hire more. And so, I, I, I don't know where it is, and you know, you, you talk about victimization, well, the, the, the burden on us is multifold. It's, it, it, we have so, cause first off, we have to make sure we have the information done in a timely manner, or they're gonna start. And, and we may, we may miss something, just in, in, in good faith, we may miss something and go, oh crap, where was that? Well, guess what, thousand, isn't it a thousand dollars a day?
Hundred dollars a day.
Oh, it's a hundred, okay. Either way, that, and they'll, they'll compound it and they'll, they'll hit you with other fines. So if we don't get it done in a timely manner, we're screwed. If we don't get it redacted properly, well, we put ourselves open for liability with citizens being able to, to, to sue us. Because we gave out their information. We left somebody's face on there, a, a child, there, there's so many ways and, and when we have this much volume, mistakes are gonna happen. It's, uh, the, these, these people doing this aren't, are, they're not infallible. So I, I don't know, we're, we're gonna pay one way or the other, it, it's gonna cost the, the taxpayers money. One way or the other on this IPR, well, it's already costing because we have, we're paying three time, three full-time employees. That's the first cost, the second cost is when we start having to pay penalties, which we will, I mean, there's no doubt we're going to. So, I don't know.
This is such a busy area. I mean, with all the oil and gas activity, all the crime that the sheriffs having to deal with. People coming across the border, cartel, everything in the world here, and so it ends up, we're like a mi- little Chicago down here. Trying to supply the information these people request. And he's right, a lot of the attorneys, they're looking for lawsuits, that's. And some of them are legislators, that's why they pass some of this stuff, cause they get easy access to information and they're plaintiffs' attorneys, so that's what they want. And it's made it tough.
And not only talking about volumes, when you say volumes, you know, we, you have sixty, seventy active requests at any given day that we're working on. But the complexity of each one of them, I mean, one of those sixty or seventy out there could be twenty-four, sixty hours, fifty hours of video footage or redaction that these girls are looking through.
Oilfield accident, for instance, I mean, those guys are out there trying to save people's lives, got their cameras going, doing all that. And you have all these videos that have to be gone through and redacted and it's tough, it's.
Well, they want every vid- every camera, so if I got five deputies out there, they, they, they want every bit of footage from five deputies. And it's like, good grief, you can get what you need off of this one, just, they were all standing in the same spot.
Doesn't work though.
But no, they want all of it and, and we're required to give it to them. So, I mean, I, I don't know, um, man, I had another point and I, I just, I lost it on that one. But the, the, it's just the, the sheer volume and the, and there, that's what it was, the complexity of it, there's. And I don't remember, cause it's changed so many times. We, we should be able to bill these people for, and, and I think there is, there's a standard, there's a.
You can't bill them per time, what you bill them for is per page and.
Yeah.
Because it's an obligation on the part of the county to provide information and.
But that's one of the changes.
Some of it down.
That's one of the changes that, that I think we need to make though, is if you're gonna ask for this and it's this complex thing that's gonna take two people, four days. Well, then you're gonna need, you're gonna need to pay something, you're gonna need to pay for that, that.
That would slow it down.
And that would. Um, but we, what we do a lot of times is we'll send, the people ask for this massive amount of stuff, say, alright, well, it, here's the estimate of what it's gonna cost you. Just letting you know, do you still want it? And that helps some. But the, the audacity of some of these law firms, um, well, uh, it's customary that this just is a, a complimentary, you know. But you, you just give it, no, we're not just giving it to you.
I don't bother, we're doing work for law firms for free, basically. And that's what really bothers me, is if a criminal, if it's not redacted, redacted properly and the criminals somehow we missed something. You can do an illegal act and get money because we didn't redact it, uh, to me, that's wrong.
It is.
And, and you're, you're costing taxpayers money when you're a criminal and you're now gonna make money because we didn't redact it, perfect. And I, I don't know, it just, the whole thing is, feels very corrupt when it, when it started out to be a good thing. It feels like it has evolved into something that is.
Cases are being thrown out because we didn't have, uh, this deputy who was standing way out here on the, on the edge. Just handling the crime scene, keeping people out, doesn't need to have the, the camera turned on. But because we didn't have video information from that one deputy. Okay, and, and that, that's a, that's an outlier, I mean, but it's happening. And it's a problem.
It just, it bothered my mind, but I was really surprised, I guess the whole rabbit I chased is how many of those representatives didn't kinda realize it was such a massive issue.
I think they need to be educated more because they, they don't, they don't, they don't realize it, I don't think they understand.
And they don't deal with it.
Right.
They, they just don't, but I'm gonna get myself.
Uh, everybody's nibbling around the edges here, this is political, those legislators, you don't think this is, falls under the matra of defund the police? They're making this intentionally hard on everybody. They know what's going on and it ought to be political, this ought to be a political statement made in an election year next year. Cause everybody's burdened with this.
Right.
And it is purity politics, they did not do this unintentionally.
No, I, and I agree with you, Commissioner, there, there was a nefarious component of this, I think. And, well, you just look at, uh, I, I, I watch, uh, videos, little, little clips like on, on TikTok or, or reels on Facebook, you know, just for entertainment purposes. I'm kinda getting sick of it now though, because everything, for some reason, my feed is turned into these where there, where cops are getting tripped up. And videoed, tripping up. And it, that's, that's, that's part of it and it, it's, I think it's, you know, uh, there's a cam- there's a smear campaign. Um, it's a very quiet one right now, because everybody got pissed off and told them, oh, you shouldn't be talking bad about the cops, you know. It kinda faded out, but there's, I think there's an undercurrent of that and that's a conspiracy theory sounding thing, so I'll shut up now.
I, I, I think that, uh, that your idea of, uh, the study is gonna be a great deal, cause it can get it out to something the public can see and something the legislators can use.
Right, I agree, I agree, I think, and it's education, I mean, will it do any good, I don't know, but at least we can say we tried.
Bring it to a head in the political year.
And taxpayers at least have the right to know what it's costing them, for at least one.
Seriously, I mean, people should be up in arms about what this is costing.
People don't understand, they don't ever see the cost.
Right.
That's what the study would do for riches.
Cause ninety-five percent will never use it.
No.
Well, cause I can guarantee it's costing us, I mean, for a full-time employee at their level is probably close to eighty, ninety thousand dollars a year. In benefits and salaries, so multiply that times three, there, there's a number right there for the, for the taxpayers.
Yeah.
Right there.
They'll get videos from sheriff's office and they'll, they'll change the video, they'll redact it, they'll show parts of it. And then they'll splash it on YouTube and, and it's not a true picture of what happened. And you're left with not, how do you fight something like that, it goes nationwide, internationally. It, it's, it's shameful.
It is. We're doing what we can.
But it is intentional.
Oh, that part, you bet it is.
I, I did like to say one thing, you got a little guy that's working, uh, Thomason Road, does a great job.
Good deal.
He's in, he's in one of the patrol cars.
Right.
And. He keeps it slowed down.
Well, mo- there's very few sheriffs who actually encourage their deputies go out and write tickets, but they're, you don't have a choice here. We don't have a choice, the traffic is so bad, I mean, so we have to do it, we have to, I hate writing citizens' tickets, I've always hated writing tickets. For forty years, I've hated writing tickets, but, uh, it's necessary, it's necessary, so.
Questions, anything else? Thank you, Sheriff.
Lighter note before you get away, uh, I haven't heard a report on the college, particularly as it pertains to trades in a while. Are you still moving forward on some of that at the college?
On what, what part, trades?
The new college that you took over.
Oh, on trades, yes, I'm sorry, um, have, maybe I've had too much coffee this morning. Yes, that is moving forward, um, the, the, the plans have been approved for the building. Um, I think it's gonna be, it's, it's take, it's gonna take a little while, but once it's going, it's gonna, it's gonna be pretty, we, we, it's gonna be incredible. We've got, uh, the, the, our trade partners, uh, in the oilfield and at the mines and even trucking. I mean, cause we're, we're doing, uh, we're, we're doing, uh, commercial vehicle, uh, training.
Those prop drivers could use some training.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So, uh, yeah, it's, it's moving along and I'm really proud of, uh, Dr. Beardmore, with our, our pres- we, we, we really made a good choice there. He is the man for the job.
I'm seeing on a, a lot of the news cycles, there's definitely some federal money being made available for the trades. There's a lot of interest in that, certainly.
Yes. Yes. We're, we're gobbling up whatever we, we can, I mean, we, we have good money in reserves, we have good, uh, resources to, to help fund things. But whatever fu- other funds we can get, we're definitely not passing up.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Appreciate you all.
Any other elected officials department? County manager comments, I do have quite a bit of announcements today. Um, I did hear back from Commissioner Cordova, uh, she won't be able to attend, so if you wanna set that for eleven-thirty, Thursday morning.
Well, just do eight-thirty, if it's easier for everyone else, I'll, I'll, I'll figure it out.
You sure?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
We, we can do the eleven-thirty.
No, eight-thirty's fine, I, I've already got them moving on, worked on moving it, so.
Okay, so eight-thirty, eight-thirty on Thursday then, okay.
We'll stay with that.
Sure.
Um, not to beat a dead horse, but it, just in regards to the IPR. Um, I just wanted to shine some more light on it, cause not only do we have three full-time employees here at Eddy County on the sheriff's side, in addition to those two full-time employees. We probably have an additional four, five, six, seven at times that also work at the sheriff's office. We have an additional two, three or four at Rita that work on them. And here in the administration office, we have one full-time person dedicated, but we have an additional three or four people doing on top of their additional duties, IPR. So again, when we're talking about costs, um, I have to agree with the sheriff, in the near future, we may have to come and ask, um, for additional help as well on the IPR side. But we do have quite a bit of people besides the three full-time people working on IPR requests. But I will say Eddy County is doing a really great job, we have a great IPR team that works on stuff. And even though we have a ton of IPR requests coming in, um, we are trying to streamline the process, we've made a few adjustments to our protocols for IPR requests, which seem to have helped a little bit. Um, I think last week Adrian had mentioned that we actually kinda went down to like at least thirty requests down to, in the portal, so. That's a huge win since we started making some changes, so I just wanted to mention that again. Um, Oxy is Carlsbad Office Complex, they will be doing a grand opening taking place at sixteen oh eight Commerce. Um, I believe all of you were sent an invitation, but if not, I have one here for you, it'll be September thirteenth. Um, we did already send out a notice of quorum, so if you guys want to attend, please feel free. It starts at nine-thirty, which is the ceremony. Um, the office and warehouse tour will start at ten-thirty and then lunch will be served at eleven-thirty, so, and I do have, um, invitations here for you guys. I wanted to mention, uh, not only to you guys, but to the public, we are gonna start having a new carrier for flights here in Carlsbad. Boutique will cease operations November fourth and then Advanced Air will take over November fifth. Um, the flight to Dallas will no longer be available, of course, through Boutique. Advanced Air, since they're picking it up, um, it will now be a flight to Phoenix instead of to Dallas. Um, the comprehensive plan, I wanted to touch base on that, it was distributed to each of you. Um, I know Steve has reached out to you guys, see if there was any changes. We do plan on taking it back, um, in our next September meeting for approval. So, please get those changes, if you have any comments, changes or anything to Steve McCroskey. Um, the county did receive final approval from DFA on our twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And Eddie County received its first cannabis excise tax for the first time for July distribution. We received roughly twenty-seven hundred dollars. Um, DFA is requiring us to keep it in a separate fund by itself. So, that was on your resolution and consent agenda. We did have to create a separate fund to keep that separate. Um, so just really quickly, just for a little bit of knowledge, the excise tax is different than the GRT tax. Um, it is twelve percent, um, of all sales. And it only applies to the retail sales. It doesn't apply to medical cannabis and it doesn't apply to wholesalers. Um, only to the retail sales of cannabis, so, just for information. Um, I wanted to say congratulations to the Carlsbad Department of Development, um, for being certified for the second straight year by the New Mexico Economic Development Department. Um, they got Certified Economic Development Organization Award and by doing that, they were able to get a forty thousand dollar grant. So, just wanted to say congratulations to them for all their hard work. And then lastly, um, as you all know, we've been making a lot of changes in fire service. This fiscal year, we officially, on the financial side, consolidated fire funds, fire excise funds and contribution funds. Which was a huge change and it's a huge win, I think, for everybody. Um, just to give you a little bit of an idea, we have roughly about a hundred and forty funds within the county. Fire, excise, contribution and donation and, um, the fire protection funds took up about thirty to forty percent of those funds. So, we now consolidated all those, roughly forty funds down to three funds for fire and rescue, so that was a huge thing. And as you saw in your resolution and consent agenda, we are in the process of starting to close some of those old fire stations. Um, so we thank you for, for passing and approving those resolutions. In regards to that, we will be losing a little bit of state fire fund money in regards to the closing of those funds. But on the backside, we're end up, gonna be saving money in the long run because of keeping trucks stationed there, um, the maintenance of those stations. And a lot of those stations weren't getting utilized, um, anyway. And they're still in the proximity, close to other, either stations that we have or that the city has, so. And I believe that's all I have. County Commissioner comments?
Hey, Mr. Henry.
Man, it's really getting heated about the twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And that's so close to six point eight million that I can just, you can touch it.
That's why I wanted to mention it to you.
Good job, that's awesome, good revenue there. A couple of things real quick, thirty by thirty, I know that's becoming a big deal. Um, I don't know what we're doing with it. Or, I know Bill, Chalice County's been pretty aggressive. I know Liz Derrick is really aggressive with that kinda stuff and helping us. But I know there's, there's some big things coming out. I think NMC all might be dealing with it a little bit. But, uh, quite a few counties have done either resolutions or at least made comments. Um, even some of the, the counties that think differently than us have come out against it, uh, quite a bit. So, just something to put on our radar, I know that's something coming up really quickly. Um, and it feels like a long time since we've been here. It's like three and oh weeks, right? Nobody got that?
Yes.
I wondered when that was coming.
So, yeah, no, football season started, so really glad to see that. Everybody's off to a good start. Kids are doing well all over the place, so, uh, glad to see that, that happening. Um, a couple of quick things, uh, as Commissioner men, somebody mentioned, uh, West Loop. Man, I'm getting a lot of incredibly good comments from Artesia there, in love with it because it's making life so much easier for folks to travel. The only thing I hear on a regular basis, and I know we have a stoplight coming, I'm sure we have signage coming, but nobody can find it coming back. Um, uh, like when they, if they, when they, if they're coming from, coming.
On national parks, right?
Yeah, national parks. They're having a hard time finding it to use it to come back this direction, so.
And I believe Jason was going to put some signage up there.
Yeah, I'm sure we're working on it. I just thought, that's the only thing, that's the only negative, I end the speaking there. But that's the only negative I've heard about it is people think it's fantastic though. So, I really appreciate the county and Jason for getting that accomplished, because I do think it's making everybody's life so much easier out there. Other quick things, there, there's been quite a, it's interesting, there's been quite a few articles recently that I've read that they're putting out on green new energy. And how it's not really that green, they're talking mainly about the windmills, uh, or the wind turbines, whatever we wanna use them for. And how there's a, Sweetwater and right outside of Sweetwater, they're stacking those because when they're out, and nobody knows, there's nothing to do with them, nobody knows what to do with them. Uh, you can't do anything with them at this point, there's some companies trying to figure out what to do with them. But, uh, but these green energies that, that we keep talking about are being pushed so hard. Um, now we're having batteries stacked in, cause we don't know what to do with them. We're having windmills stacked, cause we don't know what to do with them. I mean, we're digging massive holes to get the minerals to create these things, that we don't know what we're doing with them. So, I feel like, I feel like this, um, climate change that's being pressed so hard, especially right now. Um, when our president said, if you don't believe in climate change, you're not very smart. And I don't, I don't think any of us disagree with climate change. I, I, I don't think that's ever been on anybody's mind. I just think we, we, we tackle it differently and look at it differently. Um, so I, I think the way they talk about it and act like we're stupid, that, that's not a fair statement. We all understand that we affect the climate. Uh, but when I'm reading an article saying that because of climate change that humans created, the woolly mammoths disappeared, I'm like, well, wait, slow down a minute. That doesn't feel right. I mean, I'm pretty sure we didn't have cars with woolly mammoths all around. So, you're kinda taking this to a weird extreme that we created, that's why they're gone. And I mean, that was in the article and I thought, this is, this is odd. Um, that now everything's climate change. Uh, we just had a, a, a major hurricane. Um, I, I need to continue to think and pray for, for Florida, for everything they've gone through, but, oh, it's climate change. Well, come to find out in the eighteen hundreds, a storm took the exact same path. Was that climate change too? I mean, we just need to really think through how we're looking at this and make sure that we're ma, taking care of our, our folks that we're supposed to. Which is, uh, Eddie County and our districts, um, with electricity, making sure that when it's hot, they've got air conditioning. Even to the point where California has backed off and Newsom came out and said, hey, we might need power. I'm like, oh, well, that's a good call. Somebody, I'm glad somebody told you that finally, because they're actually putting power back on the grid because of the brownouts and some things that California was facing, because of this heat, because of climate change apparently. But, um, I don't know, I just, I really, I know, I'm talking circles, but, uh, it is interesting to see how, how some of the things that they've said are coming back full circle. And they're saying, oh, this might not work, uh, we might need power to make sure that folks have air conditioning. And that's, that's one of the main concerns. I mean, you saw deaths over the summer that were, uh, that weren't, never should have happened. Uh, the power should have always been there. We're, we're, we're one of the greatest nations in the world, um, that can supply that power. Make sure people are safe in their homes and you should always be safe in your homes. So, um, it is interesting to see how it's being discussed now. It's interesting to see the, the, the news outlets that are actually writing articles talking about how we're having to stack up all this green new energy. And how maybe this isn't as green as we thought. So, um, hopefully we'll continue to see that, but that plays into the thirty on thirty and everything else that our state's doing. Um, cause, you know, for those that were there, we had a great discussion with, with what, how our governor's pushing to electric cars. And I'm not gonna go into that right now, but it's super interesting on, on her thought process when everyone else is saying, hey, this isn't working. And yet here's New Mexico pressing full force. Um, well, do that in Eddie County. I mean, the, you just, you mentioned how much traffic is down here. Uh, oil and gas guys, they can't plug their car in every couple of hours to continue their work. Um, we can't plug our, I can't come to the meeting back and forth from Car T. It just, it's not feasible in rural New Mexico. And, and these folks forget, we're here, um, and mostly New Mexico is rural. We're not Al, we're not Las Cruces. There's, there's a lot more to us, so, um. That's it, sorry, it was kind of a long deal, but it's interesting.
Commissioner Bowden.
Just to follow up a little bit on your climate change deal, until the other bigger countries that, uh, are a little more, little, little more pollutant than us, jump on board. Anything that we do is merely just for show. Um, if nobody else in the world is starting to adopt the same measures, nothing ever changes. So, it's just all for show, the, the adjustments that we make here. Um, with the cannabis numbers, I'm very glad that we have oil and gas in Eddie County. And we do not rely on that. Um, other than that, with school being back in swing, it's kind of that low time of the year where, uh, sports are starting. Um, everybody's getting over the, the, the summer, summer break and getting back into their normal, normal routines. Um, I think we have a lot of exciting things going on in Eddie County. And with that North Canal Road being done, I'm pretty excited. That's, uh, that railroad intersection is one that is in desperate need of some attention, so I'm glad we're tackling that. That's really all I got today.
A little bit on climate change, it's been around a while. Has anybody ever considered some of the stuff we studied in high school? How North America was settled? They came from Europe across the ice bridge between the Soviet Union and Alaska and settled all the way through. That's a long time ago, so it's been going on a while. Puget Sound in Washington State was formed with glaciers that melted a long time ago. More recently, Death Valley, something that came to my attention this morning. Was, uh, the highest temperature ever recorded was in Death Valley, was a hundred and thirty-four degrees in nineteen thirty. I don't know about that, but, and the answer to all the rest of this stuff is nuclear, which scares everybody to death. They just opened a nu, nuclear power plant, was it South Carolina? It's one of the Carolinas, I'm, I'm pretty sure. They're much better than they used to be. There's not near as much waste. Even the spent fuels, they take it down to right next to nothing. It's come a long way. That's the answer to power, is nuclear, and nobody wants to talk about it, so. And I'll give it up right there.
Okay. Uh, kinda talking about what do you do with, with, uh, the alternative energy equipment? Once it's expendable, expended. And I thought it was kind of a interesting, uh, comment that when Jason and I went over to New Mexico State and talked to, to some of their department, uh, about alternative energy and, and, and that stuff. That, uh, the interesting part that nobody tells you about is that once you get to a certain percentage of alternative energy, it destabilizes the energy grid. And I wasn't aware of that, were y'all aware of that? Uh, they don't ever bring that up, but, and it's not a very large percentage. And so, uh, you know, how are you ever gonna do away with oil and gas? Whenever, it's the one stabilizing factor in all your energy grids and we cannot give that up. So, we need to do that and we're doing an upgrade on our study. So, hopefully that'll be out here in the next couple of months. I, uh, I don't have anything else, y'all have anything else?
Well, we do have executive session.
Okay.
So, I just need approval for the board to go into executive session in accordance with the state of New Mexico Open Meetings Act, section ten dash fifteen dash one dash H eight. Which authorizes the Board of County Commissioners to go into executive session to discuss real property, uh, which is update on status of purchase of forty-nine oh one National Parks Highway.
Can I get a motion? A motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Can we have a vote?
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Fifteen or twenty minutes?
Fifteen, twenty minutes.
Fifteen, twenty minutes.
Okay, so, uh, about ten after, ten after ten?
Yes.